So, good evening. We're going to begin our meeting on February 1st, 2023 at 6:38. I forgot my script about our broadcasting using Zoom, so I'm just going to say that because of the order by the governor's office that we could suspend open meeting laws, we have the opportunity to use digital means of communication. That being said, I need to say that we are being recorded. And with that, I'd like to have a roll call for who is present today. Suzette Dowd is not present. Matt Toth?
Present.
Thank you. Vera Karine?
Present.
John Danilowicz?
Present.
And Stephen Redding?
Present.
Welcome, Steve. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. Mary, people, go forward. I note on the agenda that it says that people can join the meeting by global go-to-meeting.
Yes.
Is that set up? Are people able to join us by go-to-meeting?
That is what we're on right now.
That's what we're on now?
Yes. Yes. So I'm just going to point out, John brought to my attention that this this meeting is able to be joined on globalgotomeeting.com/join and the code is 599-100485. Again, we're going to call the meeting to order. I had heard from everybody. I am present as well. If any of the library staff are present at the meeting, please affirm that you're here. Jean Collins is not here today. We will move to the first item on the agenda, which is, I actually accidentally said that we approved the meetings, the meeting minutes from the November meeting, but we had not. So we're going to approve meeting minutes from both our November 2nd meeting as well as the interview that we had with the joint, the joint interview with the Board of Selectment on Monday, December 12th. Does everybody have those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, starting with meeting minutes from November 2nd. Just going to give everybody a minute to peruse. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
From Vera. Thank you, Vera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Steve, thank you. And just through roll call, just for the meeting minutes approval, I have a first from Vera, second from Steve. John?
Yes.
Very good. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Yeah, and I approve. So those are for the November 2nd meeting minutes. And then if we could just take a look at the brief minutes from our interview with Steve Redding on December 12th.
And just to note, those are verbatim the same minutes that were approved by the select board for that joint meeting as well.
Great, great. So do I have a motion to approve the December 12th meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Very good. Thank you, Vera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. You've been sworn in, so you can absolutely vote. Thank you very much. John?
Yes.
Very good. Matthew Toth?
I have to stay on this.
Oh, you weren't there. That's right. And I approve the minutes as well. So those are approved. We will move to the next item on the agenda, which is... We talked, Jean was kind enough to send us in the section of community and public comment and question of the month, the director's report and the budget. Does anybody wish to bring up any questions that we can record, or should we wait for Jean to be present at our next meeting?
So are these separate agenda items, though? I mean, they're listed as separate?
Yes, they are. She mailed them to us, though.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying, if, I would suggest we just go through the agenda item by item.
That's right. I'm sorry. I was looking at them as bullets. So in terms of the community and public comment and question of the month, we did have a question of the month back in October, Steve. We got some feedback, but we were looking into, I put in a question to the, both the library director and I am in the process of emailing people over at Town Hall to see if we can get Board of Trustees email addresses under our names so that people could respond and privately respond to questions of the month. So we're in the process of doing that, but we have no new questions of the month. The next item is the director's report. Jean provided us with that report this week via email. Does anyone have any questions?
Is that the bills, the expenditures?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions about that? Matt?
I don't think, Mary?
Yep.
I don't think that's a director's report. That's the newsletter for the town, isn't it? We haven't had a director's report for...
Yeah, I would, I'd concur with Matt. I don't believe that Jean provided a director's report for this month. But she did share with us a copy of the Town Newsletter.
Okay.
With the highlights from the fall.
Okay, very good. And any questions about that or the budget? Matt, did you have anything? No. Anybody else? Okay, very good. Then if we could move on to the trustee and...
Sorry, can I just, on number five?
Yep.
So I think it's actually, it's the expenditure report.
Oh, okay.
So we did get a copy of that.
Yes, we did. We did. Thank you for clarifying.
But were we waiting for a budget report?
It's really the...
Expenditures to budget?
It is. On a monthly basis, Jean, the director, reports out about the budget, but in terms of the expenditures of the library, and she explains them, and then we are able to ask any questions if we have questions for her. In the case that she's not here tonight, I wondered if we should table that for the next meeting when she does attend?
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Matt, did you have something to say?
No, I just said, that sounds good.
Okay. In terms of the trustee question and comments section, the first piece was the APL Policies and Procedures Collection Policy, Next Steps. I know Vera, if you don't mind explaining, you collected some information for that, an update?
I did. Matt, you are missing it. I put together the Auburn demographics for the collections policy. Because I noticed the various collections policies we've looked at, some do kind of a blurb about what flavor their city or town has and what their population is like, and others give a breakdown of steps, how many kids under five, how many under, you know, how many people are under 18, how many people are over 65, you know, ethnic and ethnic and racial breakdown, the median household income. So I have all of that in here. The reason being that sometimes this information informs what sort of a collection you have. So if anyone wants to refer back to this and say, for example, 91.9% of Auburn households have a computer, 89.4% have a broadband internet subscription. So maybe we don't focus so heavily on, say, computer literacy because it looks like the vast majority of people have it. Or maybe if we do flow such a class, we can refer back and say, well, turns out attendance was low because there isn't such a need. Typically, collections also reflect kind of the reading level and interest and whatnot. So I hope this was useful. Matt, I will email this to you so you can add it in. I'm not going to read it. And it's actually good I waited because these numbers did get updated between when I originally wrote this draft and when I looked it over yesterday and just double-checked.
Double-checked.
The census data came in.
Great.
Can I just ask, Mary, I mean, this is great.
Yeah.
Is the source for all this data, the 2020 census?
Mine? So it's interesting. Actually, no. The original source was 2020, and now most of it is 2021. I just didn't update the top number. And then there are some sources that have 2022 numbers. So it's a little bit tricky, right? It depends on where you're going because even the US, the census data pulls from 2017 through 2020, and then with 2021 numbers sprinkled in there. There is a neighborhood like niche.com website, which also gives demographic data. There's actually, appears to be more reflective of the full 2022 numbers. So if you guys want me to just grab from there and read the 22 numbers, I can do that. The format will stay the same.
Also, on the Town of Auburn site, there's the transparency section that has a lot of this information as well through Clear, I think it's called ClearGov?
Your smart cookie, I'll check it out.
Yeah.
I did not think to look there.
ClearGov. That's a great, that's a great title.
Yeah, my suggestion would just be that you cite the source.
Okay.
Because I think somebody looking at it would wonder where the numbers came from. So whatever the source is, I think it'd be useful to cite that.
Fair point.
Totally agree.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, it does. Any questions, comments about that piece? Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Welcome, welcome.
Uh, then, sorry.
No, it's okay. If you guys look this over and at some point spot something that you feel I should add, by all means, let me know. It's okay if it's not now. It's okay if you peruse the leisure and then like shoot over an email or something individually so there's no violation of open meeting laws.
Right.
I assume we'll review this again at least once before we finalize it.
Right.
And does Jean use this to come up with the collection policy, or how does that happen?
Good question.
So we do not have a collection policy. Definitely, Matt, I'm totally stealing your thunder because I am giving credit where credit is due. Matt did do the bulk of the work. I just happen to be here and I'm mouthy.
We like that about you. That's why you're here.
So there presently is not a collections policy for the Auburn Public Library, but we are required to have one according to Mass General law. And it's where we, the Board of Trustees, set the policy, and that would direct Jean as director, kind of, what to do. So we're the how, we're the what of it, and she's the how of it, is how we like to put it.
Yeah.
So I don't know what she does now, and she's not here to answer questions, so we can definitely table that for next meeting. But this is where we kind of take a look and say, what's our vision as a reflection of the community for this library? What do we want to make sure it offers? You know, there's no real exclusionary language, but for example, one thing I mentioned was there's no Auburn historical information here. I'm told there used to be before I had moved to Auburn, and it's not here. There is an Auburn Historical Society, but their hours are so limited. They're open for like two or three hours.
Three days a week or something like that.
Not even. I think it's two days a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Someone had asked me about it, and we talked about going, but it's so awkward. And it really denies the people of Auburn an opportunity to just kind of wander in and check out some part of Auburn history, and I think it would be good for the community to put that in. So, for example, we put language into the collections policy to reflect that, that there should be a display. They can rotate. I'm sure that the Historical Society would be happy to do their part considering they're a little bit overstuffed these days.
But I could see additional analysis going into this in terms of, it says 8.9% of households have a language other than English spoken at home. Like, what are the, you know, major sex languages and that type of thing?
I know, right?
Yeah.
It didn't get into that level of...
And then it'll be reflected.
Yeah. I'm sorry. What, Matt?
You can't hear Steve?
I have a transverse.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sorry. He's going to come closer to his microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was just saying, Matt, that, you know, the information that's given here could be further analyzed in terms of, for example, households that have a second language other than English. What are those languages? What is the breakdown of those languages, and how does the library reflect that? Those kind of things.
So if I could just step back and for Stephen's benefit. So we, recognizing that we were deficient in not having a policy, in the fall, we established a subcommittee, which Vera was part of, and Mary and Matt, which came up with a draft. So we're in the process now of revising and ultimately will approve that draft. So I think there's still, there's still scope for doing what you're suggesting. It's maybe expanding on some of the languages in the draft to make it more explicit as we talk about how we're going to provide guidance to the library administration, that we can do what you're saying in terms of the analysis of the demographic. So I think it's a timely comment.
It is.
We're lucky that we're still early enough in the process that we can call it a draft.
Definitely. Do you have a copy? Should we send you a copy?
Please send me a copy.
Okay.
That'd be great.
In the meantime, I'm going to give you my hard copy.
Okay.
That's the most recent one.
I'll give it back to you.
It's okay. I can fix one.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else that you want to add or any questions?
You know, so we had intended to have Jean here at the meeting. She was unable to make it. She is fine. But she's also a good resource for the next meeting where we can ask about, are there any other languages reflected in the collection? Because we do have Lister right next door, and, you know, there's an encouraging of bouncing around for different resources, but it would be good to know if we have any of them. As well as, I think she had raised some concerns about some of the things. Really, what we wanted to know from her was, was there anything obvious we were missing? Was there anything that we were suggesting that is flat-out unviable? For example, if we said we keep data on a microfiche and that's not a thing anymore, we might want to know.
Right.
So again, to back up, in previous meetings, what we discussed was getting input from the entire board on the collections policy draft, and I don't know if we want to do some of that tonight, so I have some comments. Then we also are still waiting for some input from the library director.
That's right.
And we also suggested that it would be useful to have Town Council review the policy for some elements of it. So again, I think we're still a couple steps away from getting final approval.
Yeah.
So with the meetings remaining in our term, I think that would be a useful goal by the end of, by May, to get this approved.
I think so, too.
Yeah?
Did you have any other comments?
No, I think I had a comment for the moment.
Okay. Matt? Did you have any questions?
The next step really is for the response from the library director. In a way, this is backwards because I was at an MBLC, not podcast, it was a webinar. And the typical way of doing this is library directors present a draft to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees reviews it. Instead of, but we're sort of working backwards on this, but we've done this on and off now for almost four years. I do heard that there's some way we can move ahead, and if we can't get the information out, I guess we can go ahead and do a policy. And we've got enough that we can check up with MBLC. We can check with the Law Department. But at least, we should have one of these, just like Bill said, we're required to have this. And we've talked about it enough where we still do have to just get it done.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is that because of the open meeting law, all the work on the policy has to take place in a public session.
Correct.
So we can't really draft or discuss behind the scenes.
Right.
So that, again, it lengthens the process, but I don't think we have any alternative.
No, I don't think so either. Very good. Well, thank you very much. The last item under six is APL...
Sorry, do we want to, do you want to hear my?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped right over you, John. I apologize. Please.
That's okay. So again, I can, I don't know if you want me to provide these to you here as a member of the subcommittee. So I'll just go through them slowly.
Please, that would be lovely.
Again, I realize there may end up being contradictions and different edits, so we'll have to come up with a consensus document at the end. So just something to think about on page four, on lines eight and 14. We, there's a reference to controversial, so controversial books and controversial questions. I think we need to be more explicit, either drop controversial or explain what controversial means to us, because otherwise I think that could be subject to interpretation.
Right, fair. Yeah.
Then...
Wait, am I going to say something?
Matt, were you going to say something?
Well, I'm just, I'm listening.
Okay, okay.
I was going to say...
It's perfect with the bets.
Yeah, it does.
It does. That was my bad, because I added those. I wanted to make sure that we had, you know, that we had that little carve out so that nobody, you know, but you make a very good point, so.
So what does controversial mean?
Right?
Right.
And then I think there's a couple places in here where there's some duplication. So for example, the discussion of local authors and whether or not we're going to collect those items. It's just that, for example, on page four, we talked about self-published, and then on page five, we talked about local authors, and there's another reference as well. So I think, again, just in a final scrub, we just, because it's already a pretty long document, there might be some cases where we can cut it. On section nine, on lines 41 and 42. Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Matt.
No, he's asking what page.
I'm sorry, on page five, section nine, under children's and young adult materials. In item five, the sentence reads, "The children's department purchases a variety of materials to appeal to children and young adults from varied backgrounds." And then it goes on, "And families, religious affiliations, ethnicities, and sexual orientations." I think we can just stop that sentence at, "From varied backgrounds."
Yeah.
Because once you start getting into enumerating types of diversity, there's always a risk that you'll leave out somebody's specific diversity. And rather than come up with a laundry list?
Yes, fair.
If we simply recognize that people come from varied backgrounds, I think that provides enough guidance to those implementing the policy to understand what our intent is.
Can you use language like including, but not limited to?
I prefer we don't, because again, then we're prioritizing certain types of diversity over others. So I could argue, for example, that the, I don't know, the political views of a family are more important than their religious affiliation, for example. I'm not saying that that's necessarily the case, but I'm just saying that if we enumerate certain types of diversity, I think we're implicitly saying those types of diversity matter than those that we aren't mentioning. So I don't think it's necessary to mention any of them.
Matt agrees.
Yeah. I understand. There's no point in listing already, right?
Right. I agree.
And that was the only, those are the only things I had. I thought overall, I thought the document was comprehensive and obviously reflects a lot of artwork. So again, those were my suggestions, and I'll pass these on to Vera.
Thank you.
And thank you, Matt and Vera. Did you have anything that you want to add? Sorry?
The journal was a much longer list. It surprised me.
Yeah, well, I thought that I would focus on those that I thought were the most important and the ones that would potentially come back to bite us, recognizing that I didn't want to get into word submitting every word in the document. Thanks.
No, that was great. Very good. Now, the next item on the agenda is, is that those letters stand for Auburn Public Library Strategic Plan Lesson Learned. I'm just going to ask you, Matt, for the sake of Steve joining us as a new member, can you just give a quick synopsis of the strategic plan and sort of our process over the last few years trying to get information related to meeting goals? Just a quick, so he's aware of what that section is about?
You know what, Mary? It would be helpful if Steve wanted to take a look at that strategic plan, and then I'd be, there's no problem with open meeting law, I'd be very happy to talk about that with him.
Okay, great.
That'd be perfect, Matt.
Sorry.
The lesson's learned. I think we decided to table that until we're closer to the next strategic plan.
Okay. Well said.
I'd be very happy if that was Steve.
Great. And Steve's appreciative of that. That's a great idea.
That'd work for me, Matt. Thanks.
And just to add, add to Matt's point, it's reflected in the November minutes.
Right.
That we did decide that we would table further discussion of the strategic plan, as Matt mentioned.
Very good.
So we can probably then take this off the, unless, subsequent meeting.
Subsequent. I think that's absolutely fair. And then under section number seven, which is old and new BOT business, Matt, we have letter to the BOT in support for the APL Finance Committee Town Meeting. Do you want to talk about that?
You know, yes, I do. It seems, that second paragraph, I guess, explains my position on this and why I'm wondering if we need to go to the Finance Committee. The only person that can alter anything that's going on here is the Town Manager. That's the only one that can really help out in this area. There were, in the beginning, the first couple of years, there was a goal set for hiring an associate or assistant library director with credentials from the MBL, from the state on library certification. And it is true. I'm not questioning at all that Jean's got all these things to do, the library director alone. But I'm thinking that if we, that's been consistent over the last seven years. I have never not heard 10 to 12 working hours, no vacations, and all the rest, and the pressure so that when the Board of Trustees asks for something, that never seems to be able to have a priority. That certainly happened in the strategic plan, and in the most frustrating time, we had to ask the Town Manager to identify certain things that would be done in order to help us move ahead with the strategic plan. That's the only way it would have ever happened. And what I'm wondering is, and maybe, Mary, as the chair, there's a way for you to maybe talk with Ed and see if there's a way to be able to take a look at the goals for succession, the goals for being able to find somebody who can help with these things. These can't be done by people who are not librarians, but that's what they need to be. And I know that, and I'm not, I'm basing my concerns right out of the letter that Jean sent us in December. That there's too much to do to be able to respond to our needs. And the only way that you can alter that is to have somebody else who is a certified librarian that could help in doing some of these things. So I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but for me, it's a very frustrating thing when consistently stuff that the board needs is put aside. We, you know, I went to that webinar the other day, and they talked also about some of the real issues that are happening in libraries today. It looks like we're going to have to probably do something with our really important policy as well. So how do we get the help that we need to be able to do those things? That's why I wrote this, and I'm hoping that the board would support your conversation with the Town Manager about some of these issues.
Okay.
This would be the town administrator, yeah?
This would be the town administrator, who's actually on his first day in the job today. He was the assistant town administrator. So let me ask back to make sure that I understand. So you're, are you recommending or requesting that I make an appointment with Ed and talk about the fact that the BOT would really like to get more timely response regarding items that we are requesting, information that we're requesting? And I'm asking him for, for what? Am I asking him to consider? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the fact that, in the beginning, Julie had, one of the goals was to hire people who were certified, at least one person, and maybe a second in technology.
Okay.
So the only person left can make that happen and putting it into goals is Ed.
Okay.
Now, the other part of that is, I'm not sure with how things are right now, whether there's sufficient funding in there to be able to hire a person who is a librarian.
Okay.
And so that's where the Finance Committee would come in, and we have a right to meet with the Finance Committee. And then the other part of it is, you can always go to the Town Meeting. The Library Board of Trustees does have an opportunity, when the moderator asks for reports or requests or something like that, we have an opportunity to say something. So it is possible that we might be able to move ahead with this, and your conversation as the chair with him, because he can establish those goals. We don't know what the goals are for this year. I believe it was in that letter, we even know that there hasn't maybe even been goals yet for this year.
Okay.
And so maybe one of the goals can be is to hire a certified librarian, and then maybe some of these tasks that happen in that second paragraph, and they're not easy things to do, but get some help from somebody who's knowledgeable in those particular areas of library services.
Okay.
Yeah, I would go ahead and just share the letter with him. I mean, it outlines all of the concerns pretty succinctly.
Right.
To say, you know, Jean seems very overburdened and hasn't been able... To say, you know, Jean seems very overburdened and hasn't been able to, to make the meetings, and if she needs assistance, we back her request for assistance. Emphasis on the certified librarian, because my understanding is she's the only one, and we love the library staff, but apparently there's things librarians can do. So I would just go ahead and give him the letter.
Yep.
Just to say, here are the concerns. What can we, you know, what can we collectively do to help this situation?
Yep.
And so Jean has been asking for extra help?
No.
No, she's not.
No, she's, she's been saying she's too busy with things, the, the things listed in the email.
Yeah, you think if she's too busy, you know, she, she'd, you know, look positively on extra help.
Yeah, I would think, I would think that. So I am going to take the recommendation? Yeah. Oh, sorry. Nope, okay.
So if I can make a couple of comments.
Sure.
First, from a procedural standpoint for our operations as a board.
Yep.
I think there are a couple of process follows. First, the agenda came out without any prior consultation with board members, so I don't think that's the best practice.
Okay.
I think, as we discussed before, I think the best practice is before an agenda.
Okay.
Is prepared, that you, that the chair solicit input from board members.
I, I did, I did do that.
That wasn't bad.
I'm sorry. Did, did, you didn't receive?
You solicited input for a report.
Oh, a letter. Okay.
But you didn't.
I thought I did.
For the, the other thing is, the, the agenda came out on January thirtieth and made reference to a letter to the Board of Trustees. It wasn't clear what that letter was.
Okay.
Subsequently, on February first, we all received an email from Matt.
Okay.
And after the fact, I was able to put together that that's what you were referring to.
Okay.
So obviously, you had foreknowledge that this letter was coming, and I don't think it's, that was appropriate either.
Okay.
The final thing I would say in terms of substance is that if there's an item that's on the agenda that's going to be discussed in an open meeting, then that communication needs to be made public as well.
Okay.
So whether that's presented as part of the documents in advance for the board meeting.
Okay.
Or it's attached to the minutes afterwards. And either way, we can't have a private letter on substantive issues being circulated among library board members without it being made public.
We could read it into the record if that resolved.
I don't think it needs to be read into the record. I think it can be introduced into the record. So I think there were several kind of procedural issues in terms of our functioning as a board.
Okay.
And then in terms of my kind of philosophy on how our board should function, I think it would be counterproductive for the chair to meet with the town manager to discuss the substance of the issues in the letter. First, because I think it crosses the line in terms of evaluating or directing the library director's performance. I think the most productive way for the library board to function is in a collaborative and collegial manner with the library director. And again, as was already come up in this meeting, in case that the library director has ever indicated that she needs more help, or that she doesn't think she has the resources available, either human resources or financial. So for us to go to the, whether it's the town administrator, the Finance Committee, or the town meeting, I think is counterproductive. That's not to say that I don't believe that there aren't circumstances in which the individual members of the board or the chair should speak with the library director. In fact, I think that's critical to what we do. And there also might be instances in which it makes sense for the chair to meet with the town manager. But I think for our first interaction as a board, or for the chair as a representative of the board, with the new town manager, to go in frankly with complaints that aren't appropriate for us to be raising, I think sets us back in what I thought had been a more productive approach over the course of this year. So that's my, my two cents on these issues. So I would not support it.
Okay. Well, can I just respond first? Because, because there's a piece, sorry, that I want to respond to. I did send, and I, I stand corrected, I sent requests for people to, to give me items for a letter that I needed to write. And I thought that I had, because I often, at every meeting, asked for items, I did get an email from Matt saying, "On the agenda, would you please put this item?" There was in no way any conversation that happened, sort of, that wasn't open to the board. I just took a recommendation, knowing that we had a meeting today. In terms of, I appreciate your position, but as the chair of the Board of Trustees, we've had several barriers in terms of getting things done, which is the point of, in just the last meeting with the collection policy, we wanted to meet in December. We asked for the information from the library director on November second, which would give four weeks, and we were not able to get that. The other piece of it is, she sent us a very long, well-written letter stating all the reasons she couldn't get that information to us. So while I appreciate your position, I disagree as the, as the chairperson, and I would like to go ahead and meet with the, the, the town manager just to talk about the fact that we want to be prioritized as a board, we want to be responded to as a board, and that we, I will just share the letter from Jean stating that she has a need set, and we as a board have a need set, and I'd like to talk to Ed about that. So that's my position. Sorry, Matt, I cut you off.
Well, that's all right. You know, John, I'm telling you, because we always provide information, or have in the past, for agenda items, I sent that agenda item, and I believe what I wrote down there was exactly what's written, written here. I wrote that there would be a letter that I would like her to put on the agenda. I have, we've had so much trouble with the open meeting law, that I would have never sent things to everybody for any purpose, and I don't want to get into that again.
No.
So I did not do that, and I sent that to Lori, because I, I often have agenda items before meetings, and so I just sent it to her. That's one thing. The other is, we, well, when I was town council some years ago, it wasn't that long, he said, "The only way we can make any real recommendations, we can't ask the library director to, to get additional help to be able to get things done. We're not allowed to do that. We have to go through the town manager. We even have the right to do individual evaluations with the town manager, who doesn't have to, isn't constrained by the open meeting law in that way, but we can't do it as a board." So that's true, and I'm not doing. I'm, I, when I got that letter from Jean in December, I thought to myself, this is not acceptable, that we've gone through this stuff over and over and over, and so there must be a way to be able to ask for more help, and we can't do it by asking Jean. So it has to go through Ed. And that's why I think that that's the best route to take. And then Ed can say, "Too bad. That's the way it is. You're not prioritized, and it's not going to happen."
Right.
If the board asks for things, and, and it's not possible to get them done, no work is not going to be done.
Right.
They're teaching them, putting to goals, that there's going to be an assistant or associate director that's librarian certified. Well, I, I wasn't taking any risks. I, I don't take any risks anymore after all the prep I went through a couple of years ago about open meeting violations.
Yeah, no, I, I think the letter makes a good point, and I think that Matt followed all of the proper procedures and protocols and should go to the, to the town manager if we do need, if, if the way to get additional assistance, if that is what will alleviate the issue, is to get more funding, then that would be a town meeting, sort of a call. But the, the date of the incoming new town manager doesn't change the situation.
No.
And the situation has become problematic, and I don't think it's anybody's intent to create any harm. I think everybody is doing the best that they can, but clearly we're lacking some resources somewhere. And I think there might be a disconnect around what needs priority and what have you. Like, it's okay to work collaboratively, but still, we set policy and, and we should work together, so maybe this is the next appropriate step. But that said.
Right.
It should go to town manager.
Yep. Yep. Steve, did you have any input?
Well, my, my perspective on this is one-dimensional, because I'm hearing what, what's going on. I read the, the email that Matt sent.
Right.
But I, you know, the, the way I'm looking at this is that the, the request for the information that was sent to Jean constitutes a consultation with the library director. Her response was her response. We have a written record of that. So, so that consultation, you know, in theory, has been done. So with that response, we are not satisfied by that response.
Right.
And so we have to maybe go to that next level of town administrator, town manager. I don't know.
You know, it could result in a certified librarian. It could result in a redefinition of roles. Like, we, we still have a role within how the library works. We just don't hire and fire.
No. Or evaluate.
And also, and also, we, you know, we are trying to comply with state regulation.
Right.
That, and, and.
Law, Mass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, exactly. Like, we, we need to have.
It's not like we're asking something over and above. It's whatever library is supposed to have in the state, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we are trying to comply with Mass General Law, which says we have to have this policy, and we've been, you know, Matt's been working on it for a long time. We're finally at a point where we're near completion. Jean did indicate she had some concerns, which we, of course, want to hear. Mine, or the more mundane, are we asking for unrealistic things? But still, we should talk about it and finalize it and get it out there, what we've been tabled twice, and she didn't email her comments or anything like this. So, okay.
Would, would it be, would it be appropriate for us to signal to her that we are going to have a talk with the town manager?
She's C C'd.
Yeah, she is. Well, but I also, I, I mean, there are options here, because what I heard was, talk to Ed about the need for B O T to get more support. Perhaps that might mean hiring a certified librarian who can be supportive to the role of the library and, and, and support. Or, and I heard, give Ed a letter. So I could, I could physically just send him an email with the letter and these bullet points. We could invite Ed to our next meeting, just to have a discussion about it, or I can go and meet with Ed. I'm willing to please the, the board, but I do want, I do want to address the fact that we need to move forward as a body. We need to be able to get the support we need and be able to, like, in the, in the example of the collection policy, there was a lot of work, I mean, it was mainly Matt and you, Vera. I was sort of just a listener in the whole process, but it felt to me very frustrating that we asked for something at an open meeting on November second, and then we got a letter prior to our plan, which was to meet as a subcommittee and, you know, move the letter along. That felt very, that felt like obstructionist to me in a way, and not, I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but nonetheless, I think there's a need for us to, we need to move forward as a board. And as you said, having something tabled more than once is, is counterproductive to our role.
I would suggest sending him the email and asking for a meeting.
So asking.
In that.
Oh, there you go.
Sending the letter.
Yep.
In an email. And in that email, ask for a meeting pursuant to the issues outlined in the letter.
Okay.
Then you don't have to remember at all.
Yep.
He's got the record, and you guys have a platform.
And he can ask any questions that he wants. Okay. Any other comments or questions about that item?
So I continue to believe that this course of action is counterproductive.
Okay.
I don't believe it advances the goal of improving the library, and I think it leads us down a negative path, and it reverses what I think had been some progress in recent months. That said, I think if the board is going to take an action, then we need to kind of follow a kind of formal procedure, in that there needs to be a motion, and then there needs to be a vote on that motion.
Okay.
And I think it needs to be explicit. I, I think there's two things. There's one is, in your role as the chair, if there are actions that you want to take.
Right.
You know, then you're free to take those. But if you're acting on behalf of the board, if you want to go in and say, "The board has instructed me to do something."
Right.
Then I think we need to have something formal saying.
Okay.
This is the motion, this is what the board decided, and then that creates a record.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Well, I don't like the motion, then, that the chair of the Board of Trustees meets with Ed to have a conversation about the concerns that we've talked about as a board, and that seem to be summarized to at least a certain extent in this letter. But the main thing is to have a conversation about being able to head to these, the board has. Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have a second?
Sorry, and the letter you're referring to, Matt, is, is the email that you sent?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I second.
Okay, so second is Vera. Steve, did you have a vote?
I voted aye.
Okay, very good. John?
I vote no.
Okay. And I will support a majority. I vote yes. So I just want to be clear, what I'm doing is I'm emailing the town manager, I'm providing him, am I providing him with the letter? And then I'm going to request a meeting with him.
Right.
Okay.
And just to recap from before, and we'll enter that letter into the public record of this meeting as well, and we can attach that to the minutes, I think.
Right.
I think ideally it would have gone with the agenda for those, because again, if you include something on the agenda and there's a document, then it allows people who might want to speak to that issue to know it's on the agenda, and then they're informed. So I think ideally, in the future, if we have something like that, it's provided in advance.
Okay.
Since that didn't happen, I think we need to include it.
You know, Matt, it's interesting, Matt, after that December letter that we got, I really was very concerned. And then, when I heard it emerged when we talked about it again today, that's when I absolutely decided. I had asked earlier this week for Lori to put that on the agenda, is the title. But I, this, but I knew that we weren't going to get to it again today. I thought to myself, "This is ridiculous. It doesn't make any sense." And that's why I decided to send it.
Okay, fair enough.
I think we have it right, and I think in Robert's rules it's as well. Trustees do have, we have questions and comments, and so you can bring up things that you might not have had specifically on the agenda. I did ask for some, all I'm asking is some support for the other public library through those, whatever values are, are possible. So I did do that.
And should we reflect it in the minutes that after your meeting, you will report back to the full board at the next meeting?
I totally agree. I totally agree. I just want to say, before I move to the next item, in good faith, John, I am a person of great integrity, and I'm known for that. I can sign my name to things. If there's a question in the, in the future about transparency, I would like it to be, to be presented as a question rather than a statement. Because I'm just trying to be supportive to everyone. I have a very pleasant and, and amicable personality, but I also have an edge when I need to have an edge, and there's a boundary that I don't want to be crossed again. I just want to be clear about that. Thank you. Thank you very much. The last item that we had, we've already discussed, and we said, "Next A P L B O T meeting," I'm sorry, the update on the strategic plan, we agreed to sort of table that until the future. Is that correct? I know I called it the.
Yep.
Sorry?
That's the, that's the opportunity that the director has to tell us anything about when there's been some movement on those goals.
Okay. So we will table that for the director to be present, and I will leave it on the agenda. And I just want to note, John had, had recommended that I remove the item under six, that is the A P L Strategic Plan Lesson Learned. We'll take that right off. So if there are no, if there are no further items, I wanted to be able to state that our next meeting will be, would, is planned for Wednesday, March first, at this location in the Merriam Room at six thirty. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Right. And that is, I got Steve's motion, and Matt's second. And just, and just a quick roll call, just to be, to be official. Vera, do you support us closing this meeting?
I do.
Yep, John?
Yep.
Thank you, and I do as well. Thank you, everyone. Our meeting time, the end of the meeting is, oh gosh, I don't have my time, seven twenty-seven. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt.